To everybody for the meeting on this. So we're going to review today a application 2022 mandatory course, Understanding Preventing Racial Bias from Jeff Weiss of Keep Me Certified. Jill, can you hear me, Jill?
Yes, I can hear you, Ben.
Okay, so you may want to talk a little bit and tell us exactly what's going on. And I know you've got a lot of emails on a daily basis regarding the timeframe here for the mandatory course.
Well, I guess, I guess the reason for bringing this course up, I mean, I know Jeff is presenting his course, but the challenging with this particular one of the mandatories has been licensees trying to get access to the course and get a class. It's, it's, we just finished up the broker renewal and that was, that was approximately 6,000 brokers trying to renew. And yeah, I was, I was getting inundated with calls and emails, you know, where can I get this course? I can't find this course. I can't, I can't get a date before my license is going to expire. So that was, that was a big, that's a, that's a big challenge for, for, for me. Cause I, I'm the one that feels all these calls and the, the emails that come through. And now just on, I think the fourth of this month, the 21,000 renewals for the salespeople have gone out. And as we all know, they wait till the last minute. And when they get the renewal, that's when they say, oh, I gotta do my CE. And they rush out and try to get their 12 hours in, not everybody, but I get, from what I'm seeing, a large number. So that's just starting and that's, I just, you know, I'm not sure how that's gonna fold out based on the 6,000 brokers. I think it's gonna be pretty intense.
Can I just ask a question? When, when did these classes? Berquist, yes. Yeah. When did these classes officially start being taught? Like, so I, I went back through my emails and it looked like we were looking at the CTR course about bias. I believe in September of 2020. So when did the class actually start being taught to licensees?
I think it was in November, because it was actually approved in November. I think it was at our November 4th meeting.
Okay. And then, so from November of 2020 through now, for the 2020 through 2022 education cycle, that's how long people have had to take the, the two required classes and the other two that they want, electives.
Yeah. In the elective, yep.
All right, thank you.
How many brokers right now did not renew? Do you have that number?
I don't have that number. I mean, it's, a lot of people, it's, not everybody doesn't renew because they didn't take the, the course. A lot of them just failed to renew because they forget. Then they end up reinstating. And then at that time, they have to fulfill these requirements. So if somebody doesn't renew by their, by their expiration date, you still have an option to reinstate. And at that point, they have to actually produce the certificates that show they did in fact, take these classes. So we're doing a little bit of that right now with the brokers.
Jeff, you had a hand up?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for joining this meeting and for putting it together. Whoever was in charge of assembling it. Before we start, am I the only one who sees all of us in like an outdoor amphitheater? Or are we all seeing the same setup?
Okay, so you can go to the, the more button. I might, I don't know if Terry Joe wants to explain it or me.
I don't mind it. I just didn't know if everyone saw it.
It's not that way on my screen. I see everyone in their home.
I'll share my screen right now. So here is where you'd go, you'd go to more button right here. If, can you see my screen?
Oh, yeah.
You go to the more button and just pick either gallery view or, and see, everyone goes in their gallery. We're not in stadium seating. And you can go to large gallery also, okay, to see more people in the same frame. Okay, did that help, Jeff?
Now we're, this looks more familiar. Thank you.
Yeah. No problem.
So my name is Jeff Weiss and the founder of Keep Me Certified. I think it's important to help set some, to share some historical context that got us to this meeting. Because I personally don't believe that any of us should be having this meeting right now. And just to take us back to where Jill maybe mentioned, where the course was approved in November of 2020. At that time, it was approved as it was written. And it, there was then follow-up train the trainer sessions held in December and then a subsequent.
You're muted, Seth.
Is I muted the whole time?
No, no.
All of a sudden you got muted. Yeah.
Oh. Did we talk about the second train, the trainer in January yet? Did we get there?
You started that and then you got muted.
There was a second train, the trainer session held in January. And then shortly after that second session, a contract was circulated by CTR. Is the commission, the members of the commission familiar with this contract and the terms of it?
No.
So I printed off the contract here and, and just to take a step back, in December, when I attended the initial training, it was, it was brought up that, you know, here are all the topics. We went through the presentation, great, train the train session, train the trainer session. And towards the end, I pointed out that, you know, this curriculum and the topics discussed are very similar to the topics that we currently teach in one of, one of our other courses. Can we just teach that? And the response was no, you know, this is the approved course. We have to take this course. Okay, fun. Fast forward back to January, a contract circulated. And the contracts, a couple of pages, there's a contract for each school that wants to be a provider. And there's a contract for each instructor that also has to be signed by the instructor. And the challenge that as a real estate school owner that we have is that the terms in that contract are incredibly, I shouldn't say restrictive, but if I was to sign this contract today, back in 2021, we would immediately be in breach of the terms. For example.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Commissioner Berquist. Linda Burnham just texted me. She's waiting to be led into the meeting. Correct. I was just texting Jill back. She's not on my end, so there's a bit of an issue there with the setup. So if you'd like to just ask her, if she can't get in through the regular platform, if she could call in, there's a number provided there for her. I don't have her personal number. If you'd like to email it to me, I can walk her through while everyone else is on the meeting.
I can, you know, I can send her the link in an email really quick right now.
Yeah, okay. I'll text her that you're doing that. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Nope.
Should we wait for Linda?
Let's wait a moment.
Yeah, wait one second. She'll be.
I appreciate that.
Um, would you mind emailing me her number? And that way I can help her on this end to get into the meeting?
So I just sent her the link, Terry Joe. So if she opens her email, but I'll give you, well, I don't want to give her, I'll text you her.
No, you'd have to email. Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
Usually I'm the one that has problems.
I just sent it to you, Linda, Terry Joe, sorry.
Oh, that's good. Then I won't.
Thank you, Amy. I'm, I'm just gonna give her a call very quickly and be right back on, okay? Thank you.
She's on. I can see her.
Can you hear me, Linda?
Terry Joe, I think she's on. You just have to let her in. I see her initials.
While we're waiting, this question is for, I guess, anyone that may be pointed towards Jill. If a licensee lets their license expire, if they do not renew on time, are they considered to still have a real estate license?
No.
Okay.
Just gonna be a second. I'm texting Terry Joe back because I think she's trying to reach Linda and I can see Linda's here.
I was.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I now see her. Thank you, everyone.
So is Linda here? Linda, are you on the meeting?
She's on. She just needs to unmute.
Oh, yeah, she's muted. Yeah.
I just want to make sure she's here and hearing us. Jeff, you might have to start over a little bit.
Do you mind, Jeff?
Linda, are you there?
Thank you.
Unmute and say hello.
Linda, can you hear me? She should be able to hear me.
She's probably having trouble finding the mute button.
Oh.
The mute is up at the top of the screen.
Well, mine's on the bottom.
Oh, yours is on the bottom.
Yeah. There's a little mic on the bottom.
And maybe she's on a phone too.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Oh, she's calling me. Hold on. Hey, Linda. I'm currently on the phone with Linda. She's logging off team and back on because when she, when she tries, it's not letting her unmute. So she's just shutting down, shutting off and coming back in. So she'll be coming back in, then we'll hopefully be here or she'll have to go by phone.
Can we unmute her? Can you unmute her?
No, I've sent her permissions to become an attendee. I've upped her permissions and everything and she's not being unmuted. But if you could let her know, Jill, that number that kept calling her, that was me, so that I could actually guide her into the meeting and get her into the meeting. So if she's having an issue, if she could just redial that number. But right now she's not in the meeting at all.
She's, she's connecting right now. She said it's connecting. Now, if we, if you can't get in. Is she in the waiting room now? I'm not sure. It says when the meeting starts, you'll be notified.
She is not in the waiting room.
You're not in the waiting room.
No, she is not.
Terry Joe, she didn't hear her phone ring. I'm gonna text you the number I have. I mean, I don't know. I'm sure Amy had the right number.
Okay. All right. If you don't mind texting that, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
All right. I'll be very quick, commission members and attendees. I apologize. I'll be very quick trying to get Commissioner Burnham into the meeting.
Terry Joe, I just sent you that text.
Yes, that is the number that Commissioner Berquist provided me with. I have another way of getting her in. I just texted her the link so that she has a direct link that she can just hit through her text button and get in. I'm gonna call her in the background. If you don't mind, please hold one second.
Should we take a five-minute break? Like be back in a couple of minutes? You don't want to stay here. It's like, it's 10:26, maybe like 10:30. I don't know. Is that a good idea? Or does everyone just want to hang here for four minutes? She'll probably be on quicker than that. Terry Joe's very.
Hi, thank you so much for holding, everyone. Commissioner Burnham will be joining us very soon. She should be on any second now, we're hoping. I tried another option sometimes with certain, certain situations. Some people can't log in, not sure why. But I tried another option that sometimes can work by just texting the link directly to her. So let's see if that's gonna work. Okay? One more minute, please. I'll reach out to her again.
So anybody have anything exciting they want to talk about? Anything new going on? Anything happening this weekend in the Hartford area?
Aren't we being recorded? So let's kind of keep it to what we'd like to be on a recording. Thank you.
We'll wait a couple of minutes and we'll resume.
My apologies again. Commissioner Burnham is joining us by telephone. Unfortunately, the link won't work with her system. And I'm unsure why. So she's just gonna be calling in and she's calling in right now. So we should be seeing her in the meeting any second now.
All right, Jeff, why don't you, why don't you finish?
Sure. Uh, you want me to start just for the?
If you don't mind, slide back a little bit.
Sure. Linda's here?
No.
Okay.
I don't know. Hang one second.
No, she's not in the meeting yet.
May I, may I suggest, just for the sake of time, because I have a lot of meetings today and I'm sure everyone else is really busy. If the commission does have a quorum, and I know Linda is an important member of the commission, can we continue?
Yeah, that's what I just said. Yeah.
Thank you. Someone's waiting in the lobby.
Commissioner Burnham is here at this time.
Okay.
Welcome, Commissioner Burnham. Can you hear us, Linda?
All right, Jeff.
Hi, it's Linda.
Oh, good. Great.
Oh, I'm so, so, so sorry. I don't know. Terry tells me it happens sometimes and I, I'm just so embarrassed. It just wouldn't allow me to get in, so I don't know why.
Please don't be. That happens so many times. Don't, please don't be.
Oh, you're so, you're so kind, Terry. Thank you. Anyway, I apologize to one and all for my delay.
Nice to have you, Linda. Jeff, go ahead.
So I want to provide some historical context. It's, it's important to pay attention to this part because it's how we got to where we are today in this meeting. It'll only be maybe three or four minutes. I haven't prepared for it in a timed fashion, but I imagine it'll take just a few minutes. So the, this course, the Understanding and Preventing Racial Bias course produced by CTR was submitted and ultimately approved in November of 2020. It held, CTR held some train the trainer sessions through December. And then I'm not sure if it was a second mandatory or just a follow-up optional training that I attended in January of 2020, so just two months after it was approved. And then after that subsequent training, CTR circulated a agreement, a contract that all instructors and providers needed to sign in order to be able to produce, to deliver that course. And as of a few minutes ago, I was informed that not all the members of the commission were familiar with this contract. The challenge with the contract is that it, it prevents certain schools, including mine, from being able to teach it. And the reason for that, there's a few key terms in here that are worth sharing. And before I share those terms, I just want to backtrack for a moment for Linda's benefits. I mentioned this previously. In that December, Train the Trainer session, I had mentioned to Cindy that the content that's covered in her course is very similar to the content that we currently cover in another one of our courses that we've already produced. So can we use that course since it covers substantially the same topics? And the answer was no, this is the course that has to be produced. So at the time I said, okay, fast forward back to the contract being circulated. The items that, the terms, a couple snippets in here. One of them is, and this is a list of restrictions that providers and instructors cannot do. One of those, download the video or audio of the course materials, create a derivative work or otherwise use the authorized link to the course materials for any purpose other than for practice in an actual provision of instruction in the course. Now, the operative, the key term there is create a derivative work. From, for my purposes, for my real estate school and the courses that we teach, we already have derivative works. In fact, it might be, it could be construed that Cindy created a derivative work of our course. Doesn't matter. It's, it's, these topics are all relatively similar across schools when they teach them. There's only so many topics to be taught. That's one of the issues is the derivative work. If I signed this, we would, we could be perceived as creating derivative works in the future and future versions of our courses that we produce.
This is Commissioner Berquist. I actually have a question related to that. The course that we were provided to review today, is that the course that existed previously that you say is similar to the course the commission approved?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so the course we were provided two days ago or last week existed even prior to the November 2020 acceptance of the CTR class or approval of the CTR class?
Correct. We've, for, for the past decade, we have produced a number of versions of our Fair Housing course.
Okay, so what you provided to us though was not a new work that's been created in the last year or anything, or edited within the last year to,
It has been.
mesh with what had been approved.
It, it, it has been, along with actually all of our, nearly maybe 90% of our continuing courses across our entire catalog.
Okay, so it's a, it's a new class then?
It is an updated class. It is, we have previously, we have previously taught this course and versions of it. Another, another term here is that we are restricted, we being providers that have signed the agreement to deliver the course to any party other than Connecticut real estate licensees for the purposes of meeting educational requirements. And while we were waiting for Linda, Jill established that if your license expires, then you are not a Connecticut licensee. So what would happen if in today, we were to teach this course and a broker who missed their deadline, who could not renew or did not renew their license, took our course, as it's written in this agreement, we would be teaching the course to someone who is not a Connecticut real estate licensee? Now, you might be.
I think the clarification there should be, you know, you're not allowed to practice real estate if you have, if you don't have an active real estate license. But your license can be reinstated. And one of the steps to do that is to fulfill your continuing obligation, continuing education obligation. So if a person's, if a broker's license expired on March 31st, on April 15th, they could, they can't practice real estate for those two weeks. But on April 15th, they could take this mandatory class. And if it fulfills all of their obligations, they are then a practicing real estate broker in Connecticut again. So, you know, it doesn't preclude them from taking class to reinstate their license.
Well, they don't have a license and it says that you cannot teach this to anyone other than a Connecticut real estate licensee. So the spirit of what was said in the agreement versus what is written and how it's written are two different things. You are correct, Amy. They can take the course. But as a provider, it says, I can't teach it to them because they don't have a Connecticut real estate license at that time. Go ahead.
This, this accord, our course expire? CTR, of course, Connecticut, the course that we, it doesn't expire? I thought expired in May or something. It doesn't. I see Cindy, Cindy's got her hand up.
Yeah, I didn't know if you want me to wait till Jeff concludes because he's mentioned Cindy and CTR a couple of times. You want me to wait till he finishes?
If it's in response to the contract, I just have two points to make. And then Cindy, if you'd like, I can take a pause, but the rest of the timeline is important to share too. So those two terms, derivative works and not issuing, not delivering the course to Connecticut real estate licensee are a challenge for a school like mine. And there's another section, actions in the event of a breach. So if we were to teach this course to someone who is not a Connecticut real estate licensee or if at some point in the future, it was determined that we created a derivative work of what Cindy had created with her team, then we were to immediately notify CT Realtors the breach, pay to CT Realtors $10,000 in damages per violation of this agreement, payable and immediately available funds within five days of the school becoming aware of the breach. And the last point that I want to make, the share from the. And the last point that I want to make, the share from this contract, are there points in here that not relevant necessarily for this conversation. In the event that CT Realtors incur any attorney's fees or related under this agreement, CT Realtors shall be entitled to reimbursement for such fees and expenses from the school. So if we're so much as accused of doing this in the future, we have to pay, not only to defend ourselves, but we have to pay to reimburse the expenses that it, that CT Realtors would incur. So my question is, I don't believe, but to confirm, was the Commission aware of this contract leading up to the approval of the course? Or was the, and for Jill, was the Department aware of this contract leading up to the review and approval in November of 2020? And then subsequently, Cindy, I'll pass it off to you. Have you enforced this contract yet? And do you intend to enforce this contract?
Cindy?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll back up. First of all, I never believe CTR approves any courses, only DCP. So, and I've actually enjoyed getting to know Jeff because as he mentioned, we have had these conversations and he and I are both rules followers. So I'm always happy to run across anyone who likes to follow the rules. But what, the point that we made is this is our course. DCP has the authority to approve any course they want to approve. So had Jeff wanted to submit something else, he could have done exactly what he's doing today, which is submit it to DCP to provide it. Our definition of a derivative work and ours, our, our course is heavily video-based. We are very concerned about a lot of instructors out there teaching a course on race because many do not have experience in that topic. So we very intentionally made it a heavy, a very heavily video-based course. One, part of the conversation I had with Jeff was complete agreement that most of the content that we have, except for our specific videos, is content that's in the public domain. The court cases, VA, FHA, block busting, you know, the, all of the cases that CHRO has looked at, you know, many of the details of the course are in the public domain. He's used them before, lots of fair housing instructors. Most, most of the content isn't. We didn't, what we said is you cannot provide a derivative work of our work or anything that we have a license agreement with. So for example, Jeff and I are both using the Newsday. That's in the public domain. It's online. Anyone can watch it. We're both using it. That's, that's an example of where something is out there that anyone can use. So we do have a license agreement. We had two questions when we started and this was the only course that I believe has been submitted until today. I don't think anything has stopped anyone from submitting another course. I certainly have zero authority to tell someone what they can or can't do. I can only say if you use our course, this is what the restrictions are. And again, because we signed so many third-party license agreements where we have penalties. So for example, one of the providers we had at the time, which was MSNBC, didn't allow something to be posted on the web. So I checked with Lucy and Jill, and I guess they checked with whoever they checked with to say, you know, do you ever, do you ever post it on the web? Because if they posted on the web, I would not have been able to use that video. I couldn't have signed the agreement. We would have had to do something else. So I guess I'm just saying that I do, and we've done dozens and dozens of Train the Trainer courses, Jeff, so you miss the other like 20 versions of it. But I think what you're discussing today is approval of an alternate course, not an approval of course that we did. Jeff was not comfortable moving forward because he was concerned. I assured him that I wouldn't be concerned if I were him. You know, Newsday is out there, the Boston study is out there. You know, I don't know who could make an argument that that's a violation. However, we are very concerned that there's, there's a lot of instructors, you've taken the courses, you take licenses with any material they get. They get an outline and then they spend 50% of the time teaching whatever they want to teach or they add in their own slides. What we said is this is the course. You can't just be adding in all sorts of stuff. And I can tell you with the legal course, three weeks ago, I asked Jill for a copy of the legal course and I asked Lucy for a copy of the legal course and they both sent me different legal courses. Lucy's had 14 more slides than the one Jill sent to me. So there's already two versions of the legal course that are out there and CE Shop got legal course approved. So there's a third version of the legal course. I just think that today's discussion is approval of an alternate course. It has since been decided that online courses are going to be approved. We didn't know that two months ago. And again, that's not my decision. I have no authority to tell anyone what they do. We just submitted this one course, asking for this to be a course that would be approved as a mandatory course. I think what we have or haven't done with the course has nothing to do with whether you approve this alternate course that's online-based that Jeff is presenting.
I'd like to, I'd like to chime in for a moment and to be clear about a couple of points. I have both privately and publicly said that Cindy has created a good course. I have nothing wrong with the course and the course, the course that I'm, that I've put forth that we're reviewing today is not a copy of Cindy's course. It is a course that we've produced that I've personally developed the curriculum for over many years. And it is not an alternate. I wouldn't say, there's nothing about it that says that I'm saying that my course is better or worse than hers. It is my own course that we are putting forward for two reasons. One is that our students who come to us, which are in excess of 1,000 licensees per renewal cycle in Connecticut, they've asked us many times, where's the fourth course? Where can I get the fourth course? And some people have asked us for refunds on the courses that they've, that they've enrolled in because we don't have all four that they need. So the challenge here is twofold. One is that it's hurting our business because we can't teach a course. And it was only at the February of 2022 meeting where Cindy mentioned that there is an alternate path to submit a course.
No, that wasn't me. That was DCP. And that's always existed, correct, Paulette? Can't DCP always, the Commissioners approve anything?
Commission can, yes. Not DCP, Commission.
So based on my understanding of how things went back in 2020, 2021, early days, it was, these are the two courses to be taught for the mandatory period. Fine. It was, it was when you said at the 55-minute mark of the February meeting that you understand there is a path out. So the first time it was brought to my attention that there could be an alternate path to submit, to submitting someone else's own course. So students, I believe there were 20,000 of them. I think someone mentioned at the beginning of, at the beginning of this call, 20,000 salespeople. All right, there was already a challenge that was experienced by brokers not being able to get into classes. And brokers, you might make the argument that they're probably more responsible for keeping their license active because they have people underneath them that require them to. Salespeople also similarly wait till the last 60, 90 days before their license expires. So you've got 20,000 people and I don't know how many instructors there were or are approved for Cindy's course, but when you divide 20,000 by 50, 75, am I close, Cindy? How many, how many instructors are approved to teach this course?
I would have to guess, I think maybe 50, 50 or 70, probably approved versus teaching. I probably, we've probably had 150 go through it. Not everyone believes that they want to teach it. So people go through it and decide not to do it.
Okay, so if there were around 50, just because I did the math for 50,000, 20,000 divided by 50, that means that every instructor needs to complete, needs to teach about 375 students in the next 60 days. So the challenge is that we're at a funnel and there's a shot clock and not everyone's going to be able to teach the course. And we want our students to be able to renew their license because we've had brokers take up the three courses that we offered and they have told us that they're not able to find a course the week leading up to their renewal, which was March 31st.
Yeah, Jeff, I think, and I think Jill said the same thing, and we've experienced this forever. People wait, and not, they wait till the last day, they wait till the last two hours. You know, so I think we're discussing people that waited until the last day in the last five hours. We did have a bunch of schools step up and, and I understand and teach extra courses that last day because there were a number of brokers who decided to wait until five hours before it was due, even if they had two or four years or whatever the time, they had two years to do it. They still waited till the last two hours. So, you know, obviously they do need to be accommodated. There were night courses taught, but I think, I thought today's discussion was, it's already been acknowledged that online courses are being permitted and this is the middle of an online course to produce, not whether online is permissible or not, but this particular course.
The reason we're here now and not in June of 2021 is because it was my understanding that there were no other options. So we're here now. And I guess the question before us is whether the content that our course covers is substantially, sufficiently covers the topics that the Commission wants covered for the current renewal cycle. Our course is asynchronous, which provides not just more convenience but accessibility. There is a subset of the licensees who have trouble hearing. They have trouble connecting to Zoom Teams meetings. They have, they can't, some have hard of hearing and in a live format, I don't know of any systems that are offering transcription. Our course is fully captioned as well for those who can't hear.
Yeah, we have captioning, Jeff, as well.
Excellent. I did not know that, but I, I'm not sure how some other schools may have captioning, but we still have an accessibility issue. We're trying to solve that. We're trying to solve that for our students, for all licensees, ultimately for the department who's going to have a flood of people who's saying, I can't renew my license because I can't find a course. And even if they wait to the last minute, they still should be able to find a course that they could log into and they can complete before the renewal deadline.
Paulette, Paul, you had your hand up. Did we, did you say what you had to say?
I did, I did. Yep, I did, which was it's, it's the Commission and not DCP that approves the content or the mandatory course.
Okay, and also Jill, you had your hand up too. Did you?
I don't think it was Jill.
What was Jill?
No, Joanne has her hand up. I didn't have her hand up.
I see Joanne up, yes. Joanne?
Sure, thank you. I mean, I really, I certainly understand the dilemma, you know, that Jeff has and the need to do something to address all of these people that wait to the last minute. I'm, I've been doing this for 43 years. I have a little bit of a lack of sympathy for, I mean, I had a broker who very proudly said to me a week before the broker's license was due, I haven't even started yet. So it's kind of hard to be overly sympathetic, but I understand we have to do something to address these, these latecomers to this class. I'm on, I was part of the, it was during my presidency at CTR that we developed this class. It was a, a response to a deep need that we discovered. So I have two concerns. One is that I don't think, if, if racial bias is the mandatory course, then that has to be the substantive focus of the course. So if Jeff is going to present his class online, number one, I think calling it exactly the same name as ours is going to be problematic because it isn't exactly the same. It is, it is a different, it is derivative. So I think that's one thing. The other thing is the, the content of the course also includes, from what I saw on the outline, a discussion on service dogs, protected classes, other fair housing issues that are really, this is a definite departure from what the Commission approved, when our course was approved. Ours was a course specifically about racial bias against our clients, against the public and against our Realtor members, our licensees that are out in the field. And I very strongly, we, we had a task force meeting last week and everyone that was part of this group that created this course is, feels very strongly that we cannot dilute the content of this course. So I'm hoping that we can address that today.
Can I respond to that? I just want to mention that I saw a good part of it and the content looked to me, on the part that I saw, which was, you know, a good chunk of it, was, I thought it was excellent. I thought it covered the topics. It covered block busting. It covered redlining. I do think with service animals, I think we've got a very hot topic in the state of Connecticut, especially because people are now reclassifying pets as, you know, I don't know what they're calling them, personal comfort animals or whatever they're calling it. But we've got a very hot topic. And what I saw is that, that, you know, the video that I saw that Jeff presented, he even touched on that. But you know what? You can't even touch that much on that because it's too new to the attorneys to even figure a lot of this out. You know, for example, my insurance company says that if someone has a, an aggressive dog breed, they'll cancel me. So now if someone has a service animal and it's an aggressive breed, I've really got a problem. I have talked to my attorney. We have a strategy, but that's really a problem. So, you know, these, these are the up and coming topics that we all as, as real estate professionals are going to be facing.
Just respond to that because it's in direct response to what I said. I totally agree with you, Peter, that has to be covered, but it is covered under the legal. I mean, the legal course that I took to get my broker's license renewed covered that. It is covered. I think, again, this course was approved specifically as a racial bias class. And, and I feel very strongly that there was a need for it. It was seen and we were heard by the Commission. We were so appreciative. We need to keep the content as clear as it, as it is and not dilute that.
Cindy? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. A lot of Jeff's content, maybe half of the course really is about race. The other half of the course is substantially covered in the legal course. It's, the legal course currently has 30 minutes of fair housing, the one, the other mandatory course. That covers all of the other protected classes. The last session, there was a full fair housing course. Race got one slide for 10 minutes in the last course. So now in this new, in the new legal course, the fair housing has 30 minutes. Service animals have 20 minutes. Service animals also got a large chunk of the time in the last fair housing course. Agency law, fiduciary duties, office policies, all of that is covered in the legal course. So I actually think the course Jeff presented is substantially similar to the legal course. It doesn't have advertising, but it has as much content that's in the other legal course as it does content that's in the race course or racial bias course. Our, and again, it's not up to us. Our request is if you approve any other course, we would hope that substantially all of the course would be directed about race. We know students don't want to discuss it. We know that, that a lot of people have content that they could just fit in. You don't have to create any new content, but it seemed really important to us. For example, everyone knows and is always known about redlining, block busting and steering. A lot of people don't know about FHA and VA and the Supreme Court and real estate licensing authorities and the Realtor Code of Ethics. This is a, and I've been teaching fair housing 35 years. I didn't even know these topics until the, until our, until our licensees of color got together and we really looked at what the fair housing-
We lost you.
-was teaching. Okay.
Not here.
No, I could still- Yeah, so there are just specific topics that are more than what has traditionally been taught in a fair housing class. That's why the topic, even though it covers fair housing as part of it, it is not a course called fair housing. It's not teaching them fiduciary duty and client relationships and all of the rest of it. Those are traditionally covered in agency classes and legal classes. So do I think Jeff can create a quality class of course? I mean, I highly respect that he doesn't let people zoom through it like other providers do. We just would have been hopeful for two things. One is that the content that's generic in nature or more aligned with the other course would have instead had more on race. And if there's an alternate online course, which I believe you all are planning to approve because it's permissible, that it not have the same title because I do think it'll be confusing. People will think they're taking the course CTR developed and they'll arrive and it's going to be covered and also, you know, it's not going to be our course. I would, you know, even if it's just called racial bias in real estate, you know, that's just somehow different than our name would be our request related to approving not just Jeff's course, but any online course. It's meant to be, if it matters, you know, a substantial equivalent to the one that we've provided. We are not, we are obviously not objecting to an online course or Jeff doing a course or most of his content because I think that's already been established in earlier meetings that you all are going to approve it because of the statute, you know, your, your belief that it needed to be expanded.
Paulette? Did you hand up, Paulette?
Oh, you didn't want to go with Amy first or Jill? Or you want to go with me first?
Okay, so I think the purpose of this meeting is to talk about the actual class that's been presented to us and then determine if that class should be approved or not. So I spent a substantial amount of time this weekend watching this class, going through it and coming up with some reactions to it because I had some questions. I know one of the things we always talk about with continuing education is that we want people to be involved for the three hours, not be able to zip through the, the training in 15 minutes and get their certificate and be on their way. not be able to zip through the, the training in 15 minutes and get their certificate and be on their way. So one of the issues that I had with this class is it's video segments, of which I can start the video, walk away from my computer for however long the segment tells me it's running, come back to my computer, click proceed, walk away from my computer, let the video segment run, come back, get to the fourth section where I can finally take the four question quiz, which has three, so the first hour and a half, I sat in front of my computer and watched all of the content because there was a quiz I had to take. And I was like, well, how hard is this quiz?
Hello?
Answer these quiz questions so I can proceed to the next segment of this class. So I sat and I watched the whole and listened to the whole thing. I took the four questions quiz, which are, are, I think, four option multiple choice questions, of which three of the question que, answers are not very, like, they don't make sense. So even if I hadn't listened to the video segments, I probably could still correctly answer the questions to get to my 70% passing to move on to, to section five or whatever's next. So I have to be around my computer for three hours to take the class, but I don't actually have to sit in front of it and listen. So that was, that was one major concern that I had. The second concern is there absolutely no visual content in that class at all. So if I am a visual learner rather than an auditory learner, how much am I actually going to take away from the class? And I am a visual learner, so the fact that I had to sit there for an hour and a half and have two men talking at me while sitting in front of laptops and like reading notes, I, I absorbed probably 10% of what I should have if I had, if, as, if, you know, there were slides in the background that required me to essentially sit in my, front of my computer and read them and follow along versus, you know, sit there and kind of in a gate, in a glaze, just listening for an hour and a half. So I do think there should be some thought as to, you know, some people are not auditory learners and they're going to absorb more if there's visual impact. Now, this is absolutely a class where we spend a lot of time and, and effort. You know, racial disparity is a huge issue in our industry and this is why this class was approved to begin with. And if I'm not picking up everything I need to because I'm a visual learner and I'm not reading anything and I'm maybe picking up from these two guys talking to me. So that, that was a concern for me. And then when I got to the end, the last quiz, two of the questions were broken. So the first question I answered, I either got it wrong or I got it right. I don't actually know. The wording was not correct, it seemed. I was told I got a correct answer, but the answer was shaded red, which to me meant I got it wrong. And then the 10th question in the quiz, the question's not complete. So it's something like, this describes such and such. There's nothing described and then it's true or false. So the, I couldn't, I, I actually guessed, I guessed true and that was the right answer, but I don't even know what the question was. So the course that was provided to us, it had errors in it. And that was just my takeaway. And the, the biggest issue singly for me was that I could hit a proceed button, walk away from my computer, let it run for three hours. Nobody would know that I wasn't there, answer some easy questions and then come back. So like, that's the main concern I have. And while I understand we cannot enforce in-person or live virtual classes based on the statute, I want to make sure whatever we're approving, somebody has to sit there and interact and listen.
Jeff? Jeff, you're muted. You're muted, Jeff.
Thank you, Ben. Amy, thank you for your feedback and for taking the time to, to complete the course. And similarly for Peter, for taking the time as well and for your kind feedback. Amy, your biggest problem with our course is actually an issue, a larger issue with the regulations. Because right now, I can enable a feature on our platform that will make you click, "I am here," every 10 seconds, 30 seconds, 90 seconds, every three minutes, and it'll pause it and it'll sign you out if you don't answer fast enough. But that's not why we're here. We're not here because of, of the issue with the bigger problem of the lack of regulation around online delivery. Unfortunately, that, that challenge is a challenge that you have with many of the asynchronous providers in this state, right? If it's a reading-based course, there are some providers that you can just click as fast as you possibly can and answer the quiz questions. So heard, understood. I've been a proponent of changing and, and creating enforcement mechanisms to strengthen those regulations. And it sounds like from a recent, am I muted? No. It sounds like from a, a recent meeting and the previous meeting that that's something that Paul is going to be undertaking over the next year. And I've volunteered to assist him and give my feedback, should he reach out and be interested in that. Because as, as a provider in 11 different states, there are differing regulations in different states that might be interesting for him to be aware of. So I agree with you that. Regarding the quiz questions that weren't working for you, it's something that I will take a look at. I'll see the questions that you were asked because I can. I will look at them and I'll get that resolved. The audio, audio versus visual type of learner, you are not alone. There are a lot of people that prefer reading, that prefer visuals. And, and there are people that sign up for our course that are just like you that, that request a refund. And we happily give it to them. We don't want any student who's not happy with our experience to be paying for it or feel like they're stuck with us. So we are not the solution for every licensee out there. But for those who do prefer our format, which there are many of, we offer that type of course. Personally, I don't like reading, which is why all of our courses are not reading-based or, or, and less, less visual than you had hoped. So all of your points understood. Solvable issues by regulation or by me taking a look and reviewing the quiz questions that were provided to you and that are in the larger test bank, because there's a larger test bank that they pull from. Circling back to, to Cindy and I think it was Joanne's points around the title of the course and the content of the course. Our course is three hours, about 177 minutes plus three multiple choice and an optional survey at the end. And that is longer than most feature-length movies that you've ever watched. Not all of them, but many of them. And when there are no pauses to, you know, stop and have a conversation, there's no five, 10-minute breaks, you're just going, talking topic through topic. And when you know those topics more or less like the back of your hands, as I do and the people who are on screen with me do, you're able to cover a lot of ground quickly. And in so doing, you're able to include more topics and tie them all back together. Do we offer, do we include topics on fair housing in our course? Absolutely. Do we include o, office policies and best practices to avoid discrimination and discriminatory behavior? Yes, we do, because their time permits and that's a relevant topic, right? Do we talk about service animals in there? We do. It's not really about racial, race and bias on that part, but we didn't create a copy of the Understanding and Prevention, Preventing Racial Bias course. This course was largely entirely already produced. So what we're submitting here is an option that I believe sufficiently takes the, takes the time sufficiently to cover the topics that are important, plus adds more. So to suggest that we don't spend enough time on one topic or too much time on another topic, it's very difficult if you haven't seen the course. I don't know if you've seen the course or not, but that is, I believe we substantially cover that. The topics that are, are important and relevant here in both the current market conditions and the economy that we're in, but also as it relates to race and bias and discrimination.
Cindy, did you have your hand up? No. Amy?
Yeah, so, just, so just to, to react to that statement. I, I was on the, the smaller subgroup that works with UConn to approve the, the other mandatory class, the law class and, and agency class. And, you know, we made sure that the topics, the topic about fair housing and service animals and things like that was included. So I think because we specifically wanted the racial bias class and those other topics were covered, I don't, I don't understand why, I don't know why they would be approved for a second class where the entire entirety of that class should be about racial, racial bias and discrimination. I just, because they are covered in the other required class, I don't know why they should be covered twice.
If it, if it's all the same, I'd be happy to chop that 15 minutes out of the course or however long it is, it would still be, it would still be a three-hour course as, as Arelo and this, and other courses can be approved. If that would make you happier. I don't know if it was 15. I forget exactly how long that segment was. But if you'd rather not see it, I can take it out, but I still feel that it is an important and relevant topic. And if it's, if it's taught in another course, I mean, we also tie in fair housing in some of our financing courses. I mean, they're electives. I get it. It's not the same. But these are, we try to bring in relevant and timely topics and we produce updated versions, as I mentioned, of our courses periodically. Most recently, we've produced almost our entire catalog across all of our states in the, in the past year. Because we continue to do that. COVID messed up our production schedule. But, you know, the, if that's, if that's the, the deal-breaking part for you, I'd be happy to remove that, but I don't think it's necessary to remove. I think we sufficiently cover race and bias through the rest of the content in our course.
Peter, you had your hand up?
Thank you. I wanted to mention, I mean, just for me, it's, it's very appealing that the customer has a choice. I really want to see, I want to see learners have an option of different ways. I thought what Amy said was fantastic, that, you know, different people learn differently. And it's true. And I love, I love what Jeff said, that, you know, that this isn't going to work for everybody, but it will work very well for some people. And for those who aren't able to learn this way, they can have their money back. I think that's appealing. I do think that we have to attack this a lot of different ways. And I was also listening to Jill. And everyone rushes the last second, "Where can I take a class? Where can I take it, you know, as quickly as possible because I need it by tomorrow at noon?" And, you know, I mean, to me, I, I really like the online because to me, it solves a, a problem we have. There's a practical problem that we have a lot of people who need to be educated. They need a choice. They need different ways to be educated and they need a way to get the information. For me, I did watch a, a good chunk of Jeff's course. It was spoon-fed to me. It was material I already knew, but that's, you know, it was good for me to have this spoon-fed to me. It was a good reminder. And I, I guess what I'm really saying is that I do want the customer, the consumer, not the consumer, I want the licensee to have a choice of where they get their education. Every teacher is going to teach it a little differently. And I think that's just a, a fact, you know, that, that every class is going to be a little bit different.
Joanne? Joanne?
Yes, thank you. I think Peter actually made, made a good point for me when he said a lot of the material in Jeff's class was stuff he already knew. That brings up to me a really, a key point. I think, and I understand what you're saying, Jeff. You have a long period of time without any kind of interaction to cover, so you can cover more material. I think we're more concerned with what's not in there. For instance, everybody's heard about redlining and block busting and we all knew about that for years. What many of us never knew was that NAR actually had in their Code of Ethics racial discrimination requirements. What, what many of us never knew about were sundown towns. We never knew about the fact that FHA and VA actually restricted their loans to whites only and left out people of color and veterans who were coming back from the war. This content is so crucial to that, to our course. So any course that's going to be taught as an alternative to our understanding and preventing racial bias course, that's fine. But the basic content, the content needs to be there. So again, if that can be added in and the name altered, as Cindy said, even, so there isn't confusion as to it not quite being our class, then I think we'd be okay with that. That's our main concern, is what's missing in the content and the fact that the name is exactly the same and should be different.
We, we, we actually cover, I'm sorry to interrupt whoever started speaking.
No, go ahead and I'll, I'll chime in after.
Okay, I'm sorry. Restrictive covenants and, and NAR's past policies are covered actually in this course. So we do cover a significant amount of it. And I understand that we have a, a small sample size of individuals who are reviewing the course, albeit the decision-makers of it. But to give you some insight into what other people at licensees have thought, I pulled the survey results for our course in New York. And there's over 5,000 survey, survey, surveyed licensees, students. We use an NPS-style survey, so it's a 1 to 10, 10 being the best, one being the worst or not likely, et cetera. We ask questions that include, "How would you rank the instructor's level of knowledge? How likely are you to recommend this course to a friend or coworker?" Over 95% of every question asked, 95% of respondents provided us an eight, nine or a 10. And there was over 5,000, so that's just some greater context outside of the small group that we have here to provide around, you know, do people like the course? I think that is telling and I apologize to whoever I interrupted a moment ago.
Turning in?
Yep, yep, no interruption. So I, I just want to say that in terms of, I think we're looking at this as the CTR course is the course and other courses are an alternative to the CTR course. The way I look at this is that CTR is a course on the subject matter that the commission had approved, which is understanding racial bias. So other courses can, other course providers can apply, as Jeff Weiss did, for, for approval of a course that covers this subject matter. So it's not an alternative to CTR's course, but it's a course that will cover the content that was approved by the commission is what, how I see it. So I think the commission in, 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 in looking at the course that has been provided by Jeff Weiss as a provider, I think, looking at it at that way, does it, this course cover substantially the subject matter that the commission had approved as this particular mandatory course?
Jill?
Thanks, Ben. I wanted to just comment on the, the name of the course keeps coming up. The, the problem that I would see, I think it'd be a huge problem, is if the name is not the same, then what are we going to add? A third course? A third mandatory course? It's this course or that course? Because all over, everywhere are the two courses in that name. And it would be confusing to have something that's different because I will tell you, they will call me, they will email me and want to know, "Is this the real course? Is this okay?" I mean, it's, it's in black and white on the website and I still get calls. Are these the courses? Though I think the name has to be the same, just, you know, you just pick this one or that one. It's not any, is that name copyrighted somewhere? I don't know. But the name is important to.
Is, is there just a modification?
I completely disagree with that. You can't have a course that's different have the same name. It's, it's, that's pretty simple.
But we have courses that have the same name that are different.
This is completely different. You can't do it, Jim. And, and if people call you up, that's, that's what people do. They're supposed to be able to ask those questions.
We're, I think, if I may jump in, I think that it's an interesting precedent that might be set in, for the future, because when there's one or two mandatory courses into the future and then other providers submit their own version of it, you might have 15, 20 different mandatory courses floating around, which could create administrative nightmare potentially, given the systems that are in place for Jill and the department and potentially the commission. I'm not sure how it's all related, but it could create a big problem in the future. Now, I hear Cindy and Joanne, I think, point around the title of the course. But the, the, there, this was not an issue for the CE shop when they created their asynchronous version of the real estate law course. In fact, I'm not sure if it was, their course was even, had this type of, you know, active participation and review, right? Because they, they created an asynchronous version that I imagine and speculate is not just each slide on a page that you click through. They produce good quality courses and they spend a lot of time on research and making their points, et cetera. I actually haven't sat through their courses, but I've heard from many of our students that, you know, they're good courses. I think Peter in a previous meeting mentioned that, you know, he he sits and reads through and he has to take the time, et cetera. I mean, that that course was not reviewed, that course is the same name. It is, you know, I assume sufficiently covers the same topics that are on the slides. And just to be clear here, I didn't just overtly copy the name of this course. I had reached out to Jill and I said, Jill, in the interest of not confusing licensees, I think it should be the same title. But I want, I want to know from you whether or not we should have, we should submit this as understanding parental real estate bias bias. Or if I have to come up with another name and hopefully it won't be confusing to licensees. So I hear everyone's point here. There's the precedent side, there's the, it's similar but different content. And I guess perhaps that's partially what is voted on here, I'm not sure. And if it's an alternate title, what is it called that is alternate enough? That people aren't, people are going to know, they'll recognize it as the mandatory course, but it's not the same name.
It has to be the same name. You know, the the commission is the one who provided the name. So it has to be the same name. And the argument, you know, when I took real estate law for becoming a broker, there are thousands of courses, each one is taught by a different instructor, no two are identical. They're different courses, but they all have the same name and they're all approved and they're all considered to be similar enough that we call them equivalent.
But my point being is I don't think they're similar enough.
They may not be. The question is, can they be if they're approved? Because the commission is the one who came up with the name. So the consumer is going to not understand that this also is satisfactory. Unless 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 I'm wrong and unless NAR or CTR came up with the name and it's a copyrighted name, as as Jill had pointed out.
I want to mention one thing about the name. DCP has a certificate upload. And in that certificate upload, there is a dropdown menu. And in that dropdown menu, the two mandatory classes are listed there. So it's easy peasy for someone to just click it on and upload their certificate to that title. If if we, if we introduce a third title, there will be people that think there are three mandatory classes. It's going to happen. That's that goes without saying. And there are several classes that have the same exact name that are taught by different schools differently. When the CE shop applied to have their law class approved, the mandatory, they were given the PowerPoint from me that was provided by UConn and I sent it to them. So obviously, they've taken that and done what they want with it. So they're teaching their own version of that law course with the same name.
Cindy? Cindy?
Yeah, we submitted, we, yeah, CTR submitted the course with that name. And as Jeff provided as his intro to this issue, that is the name of the course that we license the content under. So I think we have so much content that's under license agreement with that title that it is going to confuse people about what is and isn't permitted under that title. Because as Jeff mentioned, we have lots of instructors and schools. I also continue to not, I mean, our licensees handle the largest transactions in people's lives. I am not even remotely sympathetic about people already calling Jill, not knowing what the required course is. And if they can't figure it out, then for God's sakes, they're handling the largest real estate transaction of people's lives. Maybe if they start learning how to do this, they'll be great at practice. But I don't see what is so hard about figuring out one course is called Understanding and Preventing Racial Bias in Real Estate and another course just called Racial Bias in Real Estate. Just put a slash or whatever and have it be two. Every time someone calls, say, yes, that's the same, yes, that's the same. We get all of these same calls too. They don't, there are people who get confused, but we need to maybe raise the bar just a little bit and ask people to not get so confused over two names that sound alike. But yes, we did, CTR submitted that name, the name was approved along with our outline and our content. And that's what we use. Hindsight's 2020. If I could go back two years and do something differently, knowing where we were today, of course, we would do something differently. But for now, we've, we have licensed stuff under that name. And we would respectfully request, just call it something else. And Jeff, thank you for asking the question. I really was super, I'm so completely appreciative that you reached out with that because I would have too if I were you. It is a different course. And just looking at the outline, more than 15 minutes is something different. It's office policies, it's a different course. A different course can be approved, just give it a different name for now. You don't ever have to have to set precedent for something in the future. But we do request that you do it for this one.
Pollin?
I think too, I understand what everyone's saying about, and Cindy, about your course, CTR course. So just so I can understand, because I was not at that meeting back in 2020. So the commission had approved that the subject for the mandatory course would be what? Understanding racial bias?
Was racial bias in real estate. And we provided the outline, right, that included everything that's in there. The experience of real estate licensees, the history of real estate. You know, it had a timed outline that was provided.
Okay, so just, so just going back to what the commission had approved. So the commission approved that the mandatory course would be about understanding racial bias in real estate?
Yep, and we had the timed outline and the PowerPoint.
And so from that, CTR created the course that it did? Or did CTR come to the commission? Okay, the reverse, so the CTR came to the commission.
We created the course, we created the course and the course in its entirety. Although we had a video that switched and I, Jeff, I did the same thing you did. I didn't have enough of a break time, I had to redo it because there's a mandatory break that's required for all CE courses. So I had to remove content to meet the requirement for the break. So there were certain things that were edited from that, Pollin, but we we provided the course in its entirety.
Okay, so when you provided the course in its entirety and the topic was understanding racial bias, and that was a topic that you had come to the commission with?
Yeah, well, we started with UConn. We asked UConn the process because at the time, they were the group that typically provides a course. So we asked the process for doing it. Lucy thought it was great and she told us, as did the other people on the Education Committee at UConn, that typically develop the course, you know, the other courses historically. And so we asked if we could do it. And then when we started to learn limitations such as not posting online, then I would go back to Lucy and ask that question. But ultimately, the course and its topic had to go to the commission for approval because they're the only ones with the authority to approve it, the commissioners.
Right, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand and to separate is because I know that, I understand your concern that you, that CTR created this course that you now have a license for. And you don't want, because you have this contract, you want to make sure that people are not using your exact course. And you believe that the title of your course is a part of that whole contract, right? Whatever you called your course. So that's why you're asking any other course provider to have a different name. The thing that I want to make sure that, because the way I'm looking at it is as long as, as long as the subject matter is covered, it's okay, I would think, to make sure there's no, there's no issue with whatever your contract is. As long as the subject matter.
I don't, I don't know if it's our contract per se, I think it's the content.
It's both.
We're not sure if it's it's covering everything that it should be covering.
It doesn't. I, I mean, I think the content's half of what ours is. It doesn't mean something else can't be approved, but I think half of the content we have in our course, up to half of it may not be covered in this course. It could still be approved.
Right, right, but that's my thing.
But service dogs, service dogs and office policies aren't racial bias in real estate. Fiduciary duty is in racial bias in real estate.
Office policies are 100% around racial bias in real estate because your office policies help to ensure that all of your licensees, all of your agents that work under you operate the same way when someone walks in the door. When someone comes to you and says, I would like you to help me rent my unit. And you ask a series of questions to create acceptance criteria towards that. So yes, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of these topics are not in your course.
Right, reasonable accommodation, occupancy law, fiduciary duty.
Actually, they just added that in New York City.
Fair housing, none of that's in our course.
They just had, they just added in New York City that you have to have your standard operating procedures on your website. It has to be, if you have a website, you must publish your your office policies and procedures to make sure that they're the same regardless of the race of the person who walks through the door. I think New York's ahead of us in that regard.
I spent all Saturday, four days ago, building four hours worth of courses on unconscious bias and cultural competency. And we covered a lot of the stuff that we cover in this course that I'm presenting to you, plus a heck of a lot more. And not all this stuff is covered, but a lot more. And it was four hours of content. And we actually ended up recording more than we need, so I got to figure out how to thin it out. But that's a separate and unrelated issue. I mean, the the content that's covered in that course is also covered in this course in its own way, from a different perspective, to satisfy different requirements. So to suggest that up to half, I mean, I don't know that you reviewed the course itself, but when we talk about office policies. Fair, and there was another gentleman, where'd he go on the screen? Is Jim?
Yeah, he's our, he's our, he's our general counsel.
Got it, okay, I was going to say, if he was a member of the commission, he was provided with access as well to review. So I, it makes sense why he hasn't seen it. So the, nice to meet you. So, I mean, I, we keep going back to, it doesn't cover the same topics, but it does. It covers the same, largely the same topics. We don't cover much of Code of Ethics. Off the top of my head, I can't remember if we covered that because we have a three hour course on Code of Ethics and NAR requires a three hour course every three years. So we don't spend much time on Code of Ethics, if at all, in this course. But all the other substantive content around racial bias, discrimination, the history of that, for all the commission members that at least started the course, they got a really good background that brings us up to, starting back from the Civil War and Abe Lincoln days up to today. They get a good historical background as to where were we, how did we get to where we are today? What's in place to help to mitigate discriminatory behaviors up and including office policies?
And just, just to Jeff's point, this is what I'm trying to get across, is that if this, if the topic or the subject for the mandatory course is understanding racial bias, why does the content have to be the same as what CTR has produced? As long as substantially, the commission is fine that the content covers substantially the subject of racial, understanding racial bias, why does it have to cover what CTR's course covers? That's where my confusion lies.
I have nothing, I have nothing wrong with teaching Cindy's course. I was happy to teach it, but legally, for the reasons I mentioned earlier, I just can't.
Which is fine, which is fine, that's my point, which is fine.
Amy?
Thanks. May I ask how many of the commission members actually watched the full class that was provided to us?
I couldn't get back in, I think Sharon also.
So we've been provided with a class that we have to approve. How many of us have watched the entire three hour class? So we understand the content of the class and whether or not it is similar enough to the spirit of what we approved back in November of 2020. Because I first, so I was on the committee that, the subcommittee that oversaw the education requirements last time. So I worked on the UConn proposal and then also was viewed the package that we received for CTR's class initially. I watched and I do understand and remember the spirit of those conversations where, you know, there's a major problem with membership where there's a need for this class and that it needs to focus on racial bias and everything else includes. So I watched the class that Jeff had provided this weekend. And my my initial reaction to that class, in addition to the things I talked about before, was yeah, there's some of the things covered in here that we would want covered, but I feel like this class doesn't go far enough. So then I went back through all my emails to find, like, when did we approve this class and what was this class? And I'm pretty sure I have like at least a slide deck for the CTR class. So I went back in my emails and I reviewed that slide deck. And I have to agree, the content in the class we're reviewing today regarding racial bias and the intent of what we passed back in November of 2020 is significantly less impactful, I would say, like much less impactful than what we approved back then. So I don't feel that the courses are equivalent. I also don't know, if commissioners have not fully watched this class, can we actually vote that this class should be approved, like with good conscience? Can we vote that this class should be approved if we have not watched it to compare the two?
Other mandatory alternatives have not been reviewed in their entirety. And I'm, and that brings me back to a point earlier. I'm not sure why this course had to also be reviewed in its entirety when other courses did not.
Linda? Linda? You have your hand up, Linda. Here. Linda?
Linda, can you unmute on either the link there? Either the link you have through Microsoft, through the computer, or the link on your phone, please?
She's on her phone, Terry, Joe, is there a?
She's on both.
Oh, she is.
Yes, I can. You have to turn off one though, Linda.
What'd you say?
I was just telling you, you had to turn off one because it was.
Speaking of audio, I mean, visual and audio learners, I am such a visual learner. So this phone thing was like, whatever. Amy, I was able to watch half of the content because of extenuating circumstances that I won't go into right now. But I totally agree with you. I was frustrated with the fact that I couldn't listen to, I couldn't watch it all for reasons. And and I felt that that my responsibility was to do so. So I don't want to delay this, this situation because of my limitations. But I just wanted to say that I agree with Amy. What I did watch was I have comments on, but they're not that dissimilar from Amy's. So I was, I was, I was very frustrated, for instance, with how it started off, that it started off with slavery. And then it, and it seemed to just target the black population. But then halfway through that, it qualified the fact that somebody had spoke up about that and that they were now including the other, the other classes. And I just, why start with that if now you're revising it? I mean, that's just one input that I have that frustrated me. You know, I, this, starting with slavery just annoyed me. I just didn't think it was, it was appropriate because we're not talking just about slavery and black people.
We spent maybe 45 seconds mentioning the emancipation of slaves and Field Order 15, which was when they were provided 40 acres of land between Charleston and Jacksonville. And that was repealed by Johnson. So that was one of the first major initiatives at reparations that was then repealed. I think that's important in understanding the historical context of, you know, how we got to where we are. Because since that time, then came Civil Rights Act in 1866. Since then, we have redlining, steering, block busting, right? Since then, we have fair housing. And if if there is a two or three minute segment that doesn't sit well with you or the commission members, you know, in whole, we can chop it out. But I think it's important, and the first video is purposely there to set the stage and provide historical context because it's important, you know, and.
Jeff, I was only giving a for instance.
Fair enough. It was the for instance, and your, your concern. And, and your, your concerns that were echoed with, by Amy, or your concerns that were echoing Amy's are, are not unfounded. There is a significant group of people that don't like video-based courses. We are not for them. We don't pretend to be. We don't, we don't defend ourselves and say, well, you signed up and you got to complete it. We don't argue with them. We say, no problem, we'll give you a refund, so you can go somewhere else to complete the course. You know, all three minutes of, of the student's time has been lost. There are people who, who prefer reading, and they go to courses that provide that. We are an alternate option. And there are tens of thousands of licensees across the country that appreciate it. You are not one of them, and that's fine. You know, we won't be providing you continuing it, and I'm okay with that. We're not for everyone, but we are for a group of individuals that like our style.
I have one more, may I have one more input on this? I was not nearly as diligent as Amy in going back to the past as far as what we approved. But if Amy's saying that we did not, this is the con, this is not reflective of the content that we approved, that's a concern to me. And I, and I think we need to, to review that. Again, I just haven't, and I apologize for that.
Do we have Commissioner Els with his hand raised?
Yes, Ted?
Yeah, I would like to review it. I tried to review it and couldn't, wasn't able to. I have great respect for Amy and Peter and the other, other members of the real estate board who are in the business. So I would, you know, even if I had reviewed it, I probably would have, but would be relying a lot on what they had to say.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments to say? I, I think one of the things is, Jeff, is that, I know myself, I studied the course for a while, and then I tried to go back to it, and it would allow me to do so. I think a couple of others had the same difficulty. And that could be just us. So we, I was unable to review the whole course. Sharon, I think, did you ever get in, back in again? Sharon, can you hear me?
No, I, I went in when we first got it, started to review, and then left it, and I couldn't get back in. I went to go back in yesterday, and I tried, Ben and I both tried for 30 minutes to get back in.
I did notice that one, someone was trying to log in without an M at the end of dot com. I noticed that. I don't know who it was, but that would explain why one of you was not able to get back in. But all the, all the credentials I confirmed working yesterday, and they are still confirmed working as of right now as well. So I, you know, I have unfortunately no better response than that. Sorry you had trouble accessing it.
Okay, okay, it seems like we've got a few problems. Besides not enough focus on the subject itself, racial bias in real estate. We've also got a name, a name problem that we really haven't, we haven't just agreed upon, which is also another, another problem. I don't know, again, as we mentioned, and no one said anything. Is there copyright on this name? Jim?
No, it's not, it's not a copyrighted term.
No.
Okay. All right, does everybody would feel more comfortable as going back and reviewing this course again? Okay, before we make a decision?
Just speaking for me, I, I audited, I did what I consider a spot check. And I'm satisfied with the portion that I saw. I don't know that I'm going to spend the full time. In order to really do this correctly, I would need to fully view both courses, which I, I don't think is, is practicable. But I'm, I'm comfortable with the portion that I spot checked.
Amy, I know you are, because you're going through everything. Ted, would you rather review? Again?
I mean, I mean, Phil?
I mean, I would like to see it. Again, as I say, I would rely, probably, probably still rely on Amy and Peter and you and Sharon and Linda. So I wouldn't say, I was just, it was just for me that you would have to redo.
Sharon?
Yeah, I would like, I would like the opportunity to review it as well. But I do have a question on the name, you know, regarding the name. I, I think if that's the course that we approved was like the full name, that any course that, you know, that meets our requirements would have that same name so that everyone would know that it's the, it's the mandatory course. That's just my input on that, if, if it's all clear. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? I wasn't here when the course was approved.
One question, could we add the name afterwards? So it's the racial biasing course by Keep Me Certified? Would that be an acceptable differentiation? And would that be acceptable to the commission? And would it not confuse the learner? Or does that just add more mess?
Or, or just add approved somewhere in there?
Does the, the learner, to your point, Peter, the learner doesn't know what's in the course until they're in the course. And they are likely not taking both courses. So I'm not sure how it'd be a challenge for the learners, because I don't think there's an expectation amongst students, licensees, around like, oh, I can't wait to watch XYZ content in the course. Although I don't speak on behalf of all licensees, I just-
But you're right, they look at the name, does it match? And then they take the class. That's, you're right, I mean, that's what I do. And I'm assuming that's what other people do.
And, and that's what the CE shop does with their version of the asynchronous course. I don't believe it's even reviewed or discussed. There was no discussion about reviewing the course. They came before the board and, or the commission, excuse me, in November of 2021. And they said, in paraphrasing, you know, can we teach this course asynchronously? Why not, or why not? And that was it, they were off to the races.
There is one thing, though, that, you know, the CE shop is a, is a, is a, is a presence throughout the United States. And they can, they can come before the commission and say, we're already certified in X number of states. And I'm not saying that you're not, I don't know enough about your business to know. But it is helpful when you know that this is already approved in New York and California and wherever else. You know, it makes our job an awful lot easier.
And it's ORELO approved as well. I, I know that that's relatively newer foreign concept.
And that is important too. The ORELO certification also, you know, it's, it's more evidence that this is good content that we, that we can get behind.
I myself would probably feel more comfortable going, getting back in and completing it, of course. I think with that, we wouldn't have enough as a quorum right now to vote on it. So therefore, we'd probably have to have a continuation of, of this meeting to another time after we had, all had a chance to review the course or feel com, feel comfortable by making that decision.
Was the course, was the Understanding and Preventing Racial Bias course taught in its entirety before the commission, before it was approved? Was it, well, did you sit through it for three hours and, and hear, and watch the videos and do everything? Or was the outline sufficient to approve it?
Jeff, they had the whole PowerPoint, so they could review all the screens.
Got it, so, but-
And they had, and they had the instructor materials, so it was possible to read exactly what was happening in each section.
Got it, so, so my outline with learning objectives, course description, and having provided access for three, four, five days before this meeting is insufficient, while there is a less than 60-day shot clock on, on the real value of this course to Connecticut licensees, and you're suggesting that we should wait another 10, 14, 30 days or until-
I'm not saying that much. I didn't, then I, I'm not, I'm not implying that, Jeff. But I think if we had another week, I will see if I can, if I can schedule a week from now to, to continue on with this, this meeting. But it sounds like, it's-
That's gonna be, yeah, that's spring break. That's gonna be a difficult time.
Well, then shortly after that.
I mean, I think our next meeting is May 4th, or right about there.
Well, I, we're not gonna, yeah.
Our next meeting is May 4th.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just wanted to say that I think it's important that people think that, I mean, we're not comparing these two courses. They're, you're looking at the content for what it is. And I think the name is extremely important, that the name stay the same as the name that's approved as a mandatory course. It's been taught across the, across all of the courses, have same names, but they're just a little bit different. They're, they're unique with their school, unique with their instructors. And this is the first time, I think, the, you know, this is my first session, my first go-around with CE at DCP. But I also know it's the first time they've ever had a course taught like this, the one that CTR produced. And it's created some challenges with instructors and schools. And, you know, I'm here to, you know, answer questions for licensees that have trouble finding what they're looking for. And I think anything that, that varies from the, the two names that are, are two mandatory courses are going to be a problem. And I would refer to Paulette on this. I know she's, you know, she's got the legal, the legal eyes on this. But our two mandatory courses, they're being taught, and they're not being taught exactly the way, you know, the way, you know, Jeff would teach a course or Cindy, but they cover the, the content. And we are going to have a big problem. And if somebody thinks it's just okay to call me or email me all these questions about a third course, it's, it's not, there's no time for that. There's more important things out there. And E-Lizance has already set up for a dropdown menu to cover these two courses. So whether they take it at Jeff's school, at the CE shop, or at, or at CTR, it's gonna be, you know, racial bias, boom, that's the course. Okay, here we go.
Cindy?
Yeah, we did this course to change people and to change black homeowner, homeownership. We did not do this for, you know, to make money or to, to accommodate people who want to wait till the last five minutes. We literally wanted people to understand the experience of black licensees. People in our industry do not realize if they put a lockbox on the side of the house that someone's calling the police. Or they don't understand that people follow black licensees upstairs. They don't know how to address the question about crime statistics or schools, things that are known to be historically related to race and systemic racism. We cover so much content that is not apparent in this course at all. And it is on purpose that we did that topic. I really implore you, if you're using the title and you're using the spirit of our course, we are intending to teach people about the experience of black anything in real estate. Black licensees, black purchasers, black borrowers, black history. Micro, and I know microaggressions is, is in there, but there is a lot of content that is not in this other course.